With an unemployment rate of more than 15%, the ban on GMOs would hit Molokai the hardest. Maui Council incumbent Stacy Crivello says employment opportunities for Molokai people is her top priority. She's being challenged by Keani Rollins Fernandez, who says her community has asked her to use her experience and education to step in on their behalf. On Windward, Oahu, Democrat incumbent State Senator Laura Thielen continues to fight to preserve agricultural land. Her Republican challenger is former chaplain Robert Nagamine, whose top priority is helping people, especially the homeless. Crivello versus Rollins Fernandez for Maui County Council. Thielen versus Nagamine for State Senate District 25. They're ready to take your questions and comments. This live broadcast of Insights on PBS Hawaii starts now.
Aloha and welcome to Insights on PBS Hawaii. I'm Malia Maddock. Tonight Democratic incumbent State Senator Laura Thielen and her challenger, Republican Robert Nagamine, are here to talk about the most pressing needs facing Oahu's State Senate District 25, which runs from Kailua to Portlock. Then during the second half of the program, we'll hear from the two candidates for the Molokai residency seat on the Maui County Council. Incumbent Stacy Helm Crivello has had the job for four years, but she now faces political newcomer and recent University of Hawaii graduate Keani Rollins Fernandez in the upcoming general election. Please consider participating in tonight's discussion. You can email, call, or tweet your questions, and you'll find a live stream of this program at pbshawaii.org. Don't forget to call in your questions early for the candidates for State Senate District 25, since it will be featured only during the first half of the program. And we should tell you, prior to tonight's show, there was a random drawing that determined the seating order and the order we will use throughout the program. Now to the candidates for State Senate District 25. Senator Laura Thielen has been the district's Democratic State Senator since 2013. Before running for office, Senator Thielen worked as an attorney and was the chairperson for the Hawaii Department of Land and Natural Resources. Currently, she and her husband run a small business, farm business, in Waianalo, where they sell their produce to local markets and restaurants. Robert Nagamine is the Republican candidate for State Senate District 25 and is a retired wing chaplain for the Hawaii Air National Guard. Previously, Mr. Nagamine spent 33 years in the military and was also a pastor for the First Southern Baptist Church at Pearl Harbor. This is Mr. Nagamine's first run for public office. Before we join the candidates, let's take a look at the demographic makeup of the district.
State Senate District 25 covers the communities of Kailua, Lani Kai, Kiolu Hills, Mauna Wili, Waianalo, Hoi Kai, and Portlock. 54,000 people live in District 25. The median age is 42 and a half years. The ethnic breakout, alone or in combination, is 59% Caucasian, 46% Asian, and 31% Native Hawaiian or other Pacific Islander. Median household size is three persons, and there are 13,628 families living in District 25. 94% of all residents graduated from high school, and 40% have bachelor's degrees or higher. The median price of a single-family owner-occupied housing unit is $733,400, and the median rental is $1,835 per month.
And Senator Thielen, we just heard there a bit of the stats on the area. Why do you feel this area should reelect you?
Well, thank you very much for having us here tonight. I appreciate it. I was elected four years ago because I felt that the legislature was not representing the district very well in passing laws to fast-track development, bypassing environmental laws, zoning laws, and procurement laws to make sure that government funds were used properly. And the district supported that. I think the district is very concerned about unplanned growth and how it's impacting the quality of life of residents, concerned about the unplanned growth of tourism, and, you know, is there a way to manage a distinction between residential communities and commercial areas, and the impacts on the cost of housing and the cost of living in the area. And that's affecting all three large communities in the district, Kailua, Waianalo, as well as Hoi Kai.
All right, Mr. Nagamine, what would you bring that would be different in leadership?
Yes, I see some issues that are not being addressed, or as much as I would like to. Not that she's not addressing them at all, but I look at the home, trying to curb the homelessness problem, and trying to help education, and trying to curb government spending. I'm trying to help the environment as well as she is. And so I'm trying to help the people to live a life that will have a great future. And so that's what I'm trying to do.
Let's start with homelessness. In the district, where do you see the problem as being the most acute? Senator, let's start with you on that.
You know, actually homelessness is acute in a lot of places in Hawaii, if not most places. And it's because we have one of the highest costs of living and the highest housing costs. We see a lot of homeless in Kailua because Castle Hospital is one of the, I think, two hospitals on Oahu where the emergency, mental health issues are gone to the emergency rooms there. And then as the people are discharged, they'll often go down into the Kailua or Waianalo area. In Waianalo, you have a really interesting or unique homeless population, I should say, because a lot of the homeless in Waianalo are from the Waianalo area. But because of various reasons, sometimes substance abuse, sometimes family issues, have ended up homeless in the long term, and they very much want to stay in that community. And Hoi Kai is seeing a number of homeless move into the area, particularly after the sit-lie ban in Waikiki and elsewhere. I think out of the three communities, Waianalo is the one that I've been in where they would really welcome more shelters, more housing-first options, because they realize that a lot of the houseless people in Waianalo are part of the families, and so they want to take care of them.
And do you agree that not enough is being done?
I agree that we do need to do more. I think we have some success stories. My understanding in homeless and taking a look at it, we have a number of people that will go into the, living a paycheck away from homelessness, will fall into homelessness. And the transitional programs are fairly good at serving those folks and being able to help them get back onto their feet again. And in order to really help this population over time, we need to have more housing in urban areas at an affordable price, and we need to lower the cost of living so people aren't living at risk. But then we have a number of other folks that are houseless because of maybe mental health or substance abuse issues. And we've had some very good success with the veterans recently in the Housing First Program, so we definitely need to step up those efforts. And over the last four years, I worked with a number of legislators to try and support the programs to be building, public-private partnerships, more affordable, really affordable housing, not this fake affordable, and more Housing First and programs for the houseless.
All right, Mr. Nagamine, is that enough? Is that enough to see done?
Well, I think there's a lot of homelessness, people who have been chronically homeless. And so I see that, although Laura has tried, I think I will go after that more aggressively and look at the roots of those problems with those who are mentally ill, those who have drug problems, addiction, the vets. And so affordable housing is just one part of the problem. And so I just, I think we need to go after that more aggressively, and that's what I plan to do if elected.
By aggressively, is there anything different you would like to see done than is currently being done?
Well, like I said, I would put more energy and focus. I think that Laura is right, but I think that if you continue on, I would hope I can speak for the homeless, if I could, to place more focus on that, because there is a great need. And there's a bunch of people, many, I don't know how many, that are chronically homeless. And many of them are mentally ill, that need help, more help than that's given right now. There's a case of when I was, one of the houses that my neighbor has was broken into by a homeless woman. She came and lived in there. And so eventually she was reported, I reported her, and she was arrested. And so there are cases that are there, and I see a homeless person every day, literally every day, not just one. But so I'm reminded about the problem, and I think that it needs to be addressed. I'm not taking anything away from Laura, but I think that I would go after those kind of problems more aggressively, in other words, spend more time, more focus. And that's one of my priorities, big ones.
All right, let's move on to land use decisions. Senator, what do you consider the biggest land use decisions going on in the district right now?
Well, I think the biggest land use decision going on in Oahu right now is around rail. We were sold rail, basically not just as a way to solve transportation problems, but a way to keep the country country, a way to make sure that housing goes into the urban core as infill development, and that we can provide workforce housing. And one of the things that I've been really frustrated about is the rail route, we're actually, is not capable of handling more housing right now because the city has not upgraded the sewer and wastewater lines. And we're finding that rather than urban infill, the city's talking about approving a gentleman estate, 1,000-acre subdivision agricultural lands out of Dillingham Ranch. And that's a concern because, you know, weren't we supposed to be keeping the country country as opposed to covering up our agricultural lands? And those aren't going to be affordable houses, and there's certainly not going to be workforce housing. And then the city council recently just passed an exemption for a developer to build around the rail, saying that they didn't have to put affordable or workforce housing there, and is giving them permission to build that housing a mile away from the rail. So I think if we really, you know, are supposed to have that goal of that area being urban infill and workforce housing, then we need to get very, very serious about providing the infrastructure for that rail line and making sure that there are not exemptions for the housing, because we need to build housing for locals first and stop concentrating on the luxury condominium market and the gentleman estate market, because that's not serving our local population.
Before I turn to Mr. Nagamine, we actually just had a question come in on this from John in Kahala. Do you believe state funds should be used for the rail project and, I assume, the extension of taxes for rail? Do you support it?
I voted against the extension of the rail tax two years ago because I felt when the mayor came into the legislature, he did not provide a financial plan. And he did say at that time that the five-year extension would be sufficient, and here we are two years later, and they're ready to come back. I'm glad that a number of the other legislators are now saying, you know, don't come back until you have a financial plan. I do not support extending that rail tax. I think the city needs to get responsible about managing that project. But I would take that 10% skim off the top that the state's having. I don't think that's fair to Oahu residents because that money's going to neighbor islands. But I think we could use that to provide the sewer and water infrastructure around the state properties along the rail route, and then work with public-private partnerships to do workforce and affordable housing in those areas.
All right, Mr. Nagamine.
Well, one of the things that she had mentioned, to just kind of comment on that, is that was so humorous, it's not meant to be humorous, but affordable housing is not affordable, it's unaffordable to many people. And so when I hear about that, and I'm not criticizing you, Laura, I'm just saying, what has been done, it's like people are making money, a lot of money, building those condos and presenting some affordable options, but they're unaffordable to many people. And so I thought about that we are, a lot of what we do in Hawaii is Oahu-centric, and we should think about other options for housing besides just Oahu itself now. That takes moving away for some people, but that is an option rather than moving to the mainland, maybe using some of the money for job investments or for the neighbor islands if they want that. But such a great thing to be living on the neighbor island if they choose to. And so that could be a thing to look for or present affordable options as far as housing is concerned, if we can develop jobs over there. Because people are either going to the mainland or, you know, they're just gonna have to, if they live in Oahu, they're gonna have a hard time affording the, all of these affordable housing, you know, options which are not affordable.
Senator, do you think looking at shifting some of the populations to neighbor islands is a solution?
Actually, I think a better solution would be that we do need to go back and take a look at the affordable housing. A lot of the policies, they're allowing the private developers to meet the affordable by building to 140% of the median income. And I agree with Robert here. I mean, by definition, if you're 140% of the median income, you're above the median income, and that's not affordable. What we need is housing, rental housing for people that are like, you know, 60%, 40%, 80% of the median income. I think this gap group, you know, also has their needs too, but we have to have meaningful affordable housing policies, and it has to stay affordable for a significant period of time and not allow people to turn and flip them five years later. So that's a lot of the developments that are being done by the private developers in Kakaako. But the developments that are on the state lands and the county lands, there's no excuse to be building, you know, for that higher level of income. We really need to be building for something that's truly affordable over the long term.
Are there areas in your district that you think have the carrying capacity for new development for affordable housing?
You know, in the district, I think what you're looking at, what they call infill development, it's nothing really large scale, but I was meeting today with the Hawaii Housing, I can't remember the acronym, HHFDC, Hawaii Housing Finance Development Corporation, where they work on the public-private partnerships on the state lands to do affordable, meaningful affordable housing. And there is a old affordable housing development in Waianalo where there are some vacant lots. And the Waianalo community is very concerned about the houseless that are being evicted from Waianalo District Park and are supportive of having some housing-first options there. So that's one of the meetings that I've been having kind of behind the scenes, you know, between the state agencies and the communities to try and see whether we can find small infill pockets like that in communities where they would be welcome to be able to house more people.
Mr. Nagamine, how do you see this? Would you like to see more than that done in terms of affordable housing in the district, or does that sound appropriate to you?
That sounds appropriate. I need to look at it closer, but it seems like it's, while we have done some, when I'm talking about we, collectively, we, like ADUs were a pretty good idea, but it ran into some problem. I think your brother said he had some problems with how to get an ADU going. But that's a concern, and I notice a lot of people, there are multi-generational families living in one house. So at one point, you get to a point where you can't do it anymore as far as building on different areas. I don't think we have too many areas that we can build on that, you know, that would help us. But any options that would be practical, yeah, that would be good.
Before I go to another question from a viewer, let's get your position. Would you support the extension of the tax for rail?
Well, thank you for asking the question. Yes, I would not. I would not. And I'm with Laura, you know, I would not, unless they give me a profound reason to do so, you know, as far as wearing the cost and benefits. But at this point, the answer is absolutely no.
All right, let's go to some other questions. How do you feel about the Airbnb industry in the district?
I think we've had vacation rentals in the Kailua area for a long time. What scares people about the new online platforms, and you've got Airbnb, VRBO, you know, HomeAway, and all the others, is that there's been a real explosion in the number of people that are operating vacation rental units. And I've spent a lot of time looking at this both in Hawaii as well as in other jurisdictions because there's a concern in a lot of cities where the housing prices are very high and residents are getting pushed out. And they're finding that it's affecting the real estate market. In some cities, people are buying small apartment buildings and turning them into full-scale, you know, online vacation rental operations. Hawaii's not a normal real estate market. We're an international destination, and people can earn, you know, three to four times as much from a vacation rental as they can over a long-term rental. And so there's no question that it's having an impact on our housing market. It's affecting the number of rentals that are available for residents for long term, but it's also affecting the neighbors whose now property values are going up because all the commercial sales are for, you know, our residential sales are actually for a commercial property. So now the property taxes, you know, that residents are paying are increasing, which is a real burden on a lot of our retirees on a fixed income.
So what would you do about the issue?
We, I was part of a group that passed a law two years ago that requires anybody advertising a vacation rental online has to post their transient accommodation tax number so that we can be assured that they're a legitimate business. And if they don't post that number, that by definition is a violation of the law. I think we need to, we need to come up with laws like that to be able to manage the industry and regulate the online industry.
All right, Mr. Nagamine, what are your feelings about this?
Actually, I agree with her that she's done a reasonably good job on that, and so I appreciate that. Which brings me to another point, that one thing that I wanted to, I'm trying to go after if elected is curbing crime. And I feel that Laura is doing part of the thing, but there are a lot of different crimes that are in the district that need to be taken care of, that we need to address. For example, as in Mauna Wili, they're talking about people at the Mauna Wili Trail, people's cars' windows were broken into and things like that, you know, theft and burglaries and the whole host of crimes.
What do you think isn't being done?
Well, I think working with the police as closely as possible. I have a show pole endorsement that I just received. I have a background with the Hawaii Air National Guard, that I work with the security forces, and I work with them pretty closely, and they really like me, I like them. So I feel like I can work with them. And maybe it's not so much what that Laura is not doing good, but I will try to focus on that more because any time a person gets, has crime done on them, it's bad, it's a bad thing. One crime is too many crimes. I saw right next door, someone was trying to break into that place, and it was bad for me because I'm next. And my neighbor was, like I said, broken into, a woman came in there and lived in there. So I see crime different places, and I want to make sure that we all, all of us are safe and go after all kinds of crimes and work closely with the HPD.
Senator Thielen, do you think not enough is being done on crime in the area?
I agree with Robert that not enough is being done on crime in the area. And my house is broken into, so I know that that's a violation. I've met with the police and the prosecutors because they keep telling us that, you know, 5% of the criminals are responsible for 80% of the property crime. And so my question to them was then, why can't we pinpoint these 5%? And what came up was we do have what's called a habitual property crime law, but the prosecutor's office felt that that needed to be amended in order to be effective at targeting these 5%. So I worked with them and the judiciary chair and the legislature, and we amended the law last year. And so I will be watching closely to see whether they're, they are more effective at starting to pinpoint habitual offenders because, you know, I don't believe in throwing everybody in jail, but if you could target that 5%, you could have a real reduction in property crime.
All right, Mr. Nagamine, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And by the way, there's a connection because I'm not blaming all drug addicts. There are some, or I don't know exactly what number, so of the homeless, the drug addicts become homeless. And the drug addicts, some of them commit crimes, so they're all connected with homeless, and I mean, they could be connected, and that's why they all wrap around each other, they kind of network together, if you like to say it that way.
All right, a viewer question from Moses in Nanakuli. What would each candidate do to get more solar panels on homes? Your thoughts?
Well, one of the things that, N-E-M, Net Metering, well, I have solar panels on my house, and that incentive by HECCO, they changed the rules and they make it less affordable. And so with that move over there, that became harder for people to make solar panels affordable to put on there. So I don't know, it would be to take a look at that, working with HECCO.
To try to get them to change?
Yes, and then see if they can expand their infrastructure or capability to have more solar panels, either that look for other sources of energy.
All right, Senator Thielen.
Well, I think HECCO is having to be dragged kicking and screaming into the renewable energy field. They've been very resistant to it, and they have capped the amount of solar that can go into different communities. I think the Public Utilities Commission has been doing a good job at starting to push for HECCO to transition from a energy supplier or an energy generator to an energy distributor. And would it mean more solar, more wind, you know, more individual and renewable energy systems? And I'm 100% behind that push.
All right, briefly now, we're in our final moment. Traffic in the district is a struggle for many. Do you foresee any way of providing solutions to the area, briefly?
We're in the middle of a highway project in Waianalo. The community very much wants solutions like bus pullouts so people can continue to go, pedestrian safety and the like. So we're wrestling with DOT about getting those kind of common sense solutions in place and not some other ones that may be coming down. And I would love to see the state do some more alternative times for people that are working because we know during the summertime, when school is out, you know, the traffic's not as bad. So if we could have staggered start times, University of Hawaii staggered start times, you know, I think that would help alleviate traffic quite a bit.
Mr. Nagamine.
It's an interesting thing to say, but at the same time, what's kind of humorous, maybe it's not for some, but, you know, the traffic on the leeward side is so bad that, you know, I know that there's some concerns about our traffic on the windward side, but it just overwhelms me to look at the leeward side and what they've been going through.
So you don't feel the windward side necessarily?
I'm not saying that we shouldn't do anything, but it really is a bad situation on that side of the island.
All right, thank you both for joining us this evening.
Thank you very much for having us.
Appreciate getting your points of view. Thank you. All right, before we join the Maui County Council candidates from Molokai, there's an interesting backstory from the Valley Isle about one of Hawaii's most recent locally grown crops. The middle school Hikino students from Kamia Mia Schools, Maui, report on how dragon fruit found its way to one Maui farm and changed lives in the process.
Once you become a farmer, a farmer is for life.
Crystal Schmidt thought that her college education would prepare her for a career in engineering, but little did she know her real learning would happen in a field.
So we all met in University of Hawaii at Manoa, where me and my husband graduated with a master's degree in mechanical engineering.
Crystal and her husband Lawrence lived and worked on Maui at the time her mother was in China.
My mom has been diabetic for 40 years. She pretty much lost all of her eyesight to diabetes.
Crystal's mom believed in the power of traditional Chinese medicines made with natural herbs and fruits like dragon fruit.
Dragon fruit controls diabetes very, very effectively.
But there was just one problem. There was no supply of dragon fruit for her mother on Maui. Crystal's mom remained in China and researched dragon fruit farming.
Couple months later, she called me, she said, "Crystal, I learned how to grow dragon fruit. I really think we can do it on Maui." Unfortunately today, I'm not a farmer, I'm a mechanical engineer. I'm not gonna know how to grow a fruit.
After 15 years of being mechanical engineers and also a career in accounting, Crystal and her husband decided to put that all behind them, choosing to become full organic farmers to satisfy her mother's desire to bring dragon fruit to Maui.
I mean, the Hawaiians, the Hawaiians, they're self, they're sustainable. They feed themselves. We have the opalaua, we have all the systems. We can feed ourselves. I don't know why we don't do this anymore. Think about it. The Hawaiians, they survived without any plants coming and bringing them food.
Because dragon fruit is seasonal, Crystal and her husband decided to farm other fruit. Because dragon fruit is seasonal, Crystal and her husband decided to farm other crops such as baby lettuce, pineapple, papaya, and banana, just to name a few.
The best career you could pursue is to be a productive farmer in Hawaii.
Although farming became her livelihood and what she says is the best thing that has happened to her, it doesn't come without its share of problems.
Actually, the biggest challenge is the weather. It's the unpredictability. And that's the two major things, you cannot control the weather. Two days before Christmas, we'll have a huge storm. Christmas there come, I have absolutely no lettuce.
Despite the problems which are an everyday risk associated with farming, Crystal feels that she definitely has made the right career choice.
Oh, so you're so happy. I said, "I'm so happy to be a farmer, not a mechanical engineer. I'm having a better life, more meaningful life, fulfilling, happy, productive. What else you want? And healthy."
Crystal has one word of advice for the youth of today.
If you know what you want, and you really work hard, and you have faith, good things eventually are gonna happen.
Life doesn't always go as planned, and sometimes you go into a different field of work. In Crystal Schmidt's case, she literally grew into her career. This is Leana Kanemitsu from Kamehameha, Maui for Hikino.
Welcome back. During this election, all nine at-large seats are up for grabs on the Maui County Council. One of the most hotly contested races is the race for the Molokai residency seat. The two candidates in the running are here to discuss some of the top issues in the community. Keani Rollins Fernandez recently graduated from the University of Hawaii with a Master's of Business Administration and is running for the Molokai residency seat on the Maui County Council. Last year, Rollins Fernandez earned a law degree from UH plus certificates in Native Hawaiian rights and environmental law. This is Ms. Rollins Fernandez's first run for public office. Councilwoman Stacy Helm Crivello, pardon me, currently holds the Molokai residency seat on the Maui County Council and has been the chairwoman of the Housing, Human Services, and Transportation Committee for three years. Previously, Ms. Crivello was the executive director of the Haleha O'Kupaa Drug Treatment Center and was a founding member of the Molokai Land Trust and the East Molokai Watershed Project. Thank you both for being here. Ms. Rollins Fernandez, why are you running for office?
I'm running because I care about the health of our people and our environment. I'm running because I have strong values and I would put my community first. These things were drivers for me attending law school and getting my master's degree in business administration. I have the education, the experience, and a fresh perspective that would be an asset on the council.
Councilwoman Crivello, why do you want to hold this office again?
You know, there's much work to be done. And it's not only Molokai that we serve, we serve all of Maui County. And we have many problems that will take a number of time for us to reach our goals, homelessness, providing employment or supporting employment for our residents of Maui County, including Molokai. And I would like to continue the work as far as serving my community. I've done that before, being on council. I'm a mother, I'm a grandmother and a great-grandmother. And I understand the deep challenges that it takes to provide for families. And we have to look at all aspects of our families, our working families, our unemployed families, our families who are trying to get a home, build a home, or rent a home. And I feel that from the county's perspective, we have a responsibility to be assured that we are, first of all, taking care of our financial needs and being fiduciarily responsible. Maui is growing, and how do we make sure we find a compatible balance to take care of our residents of Maui County? And only by having relationships with your colleagues, with your public and your community, and hearing the voices of your community and understanding the beat and the pulse of your community. And I feel I bring that to the table with my community experience with community-based programs and projects and protecting the environment, that comes naturally. Being a founding member of the Molokai Land Trust and as far as the East Watershed Project.
Well, let's talk about some of these issues specifically that you bring up. GMO is a hot button issue on the island and Maui. Ms. Rollins Fernandez, what is your position on GMO?
You know, I'm grateful for the seed companies being there for our community when the employees of Molokai Ranch were laid off. Despite what some may say, I'm not anti-GMO. I am pro-transparency and pro-accountability. Community members have raised issues regarding health concerns, regarding the resistance to labeling so that our families know what they're feeding their children.
So you'd like to see labeling?
Yes, yes. I, I'm a strong proponent of labeling. And the, the farming practices that are associated with, with GMO and GE farming, the pesticide use, the high toxicity levels, it's the open-air experimental pesticides, which the State Department of Health doesn't have the capacity to be able to test because they're experimental. And the pesticides leaching into our groundwater, Molokai is a single-source aquifer and, which means that pesticide leaching into our groundwater in one area would have the adverse impact of affecting the entire island. And pesticide runoff and pesticide drift, erosion covering our reefs, the pesticides affecting our marine life. Molokai is a, has two economies. We have our cash economy and we have our subsistence economy. And it's important that we protect our subsistence economy because a lot of our residents rely heavily upon it.
All right. Councilwoman Crivello, how would you say your point of view differs?
Well, it's not so much differs because I support the protection of employment for our Molokai residents. And, you know, as far as the use of pesticides, I think they're the most regulated applicators that you can find as far as with the, if the referral is in reference to the agribusiness or cornseed company. I don't know where there is the proof that there is actual leaching into the groundwater that Ms. Fernandez mentioned because that, that doesn't, it hasn't shown that today. Erosion, you know, so if you have agriculture, whether it's farming or the agribusiness, I think the process, what they go to now is a lot of cover, ground covering, which will actually protect the erosion. And with the closing of the pineapple industry many years ago, that just allowed all of the silt to go in. So if you're gonna leave it fallow, you're definitely gonna have erosion that will definitely destroy the reef. If you look on that side of the island where it's growing, the reefs are, are just silt. The, the other thing too with subsistence, we do live by subsistence. You know, you, you make your vegetable garden, you go out holo-holo and go get your food. Somebody's gotta be employed so that you can, what I call, put a little kinni-kinni on the table so you can pay for the gas to take you to go holo-holo and what have you. That's the lifestyle of our island. But, you know, when the initiative first came about, that was a couple of years ago, that was a major issue with the Maui County. Molokai, Molokai would have been badly impacted. And the impact, the people could relate to it because for our island, we voted over 70% no. It was overwhelmingly to vote no compared to some of the sections on Maui because they know what it is. And the intent is for us to take care of our families. You know, we can still find a balance. We can live our lifestyle and allow the support that we need to have employment. Now, if the corn industry closes, what about our stores in the town? What about the hospital? You know, you're not gonna have insurance, you're not gonna have the benefits to be. I've witnessed the closure of Molokai Ranch, 140 families, and at cornseed company, you have close to 300. So how do we sustain our lifestyle and also retain the employment? As far as being on the council, I'm quite involved and we, from the council's level, we support the opportunities to develop entrepreneurs. We have our Kuha'o Business Center. We have our Maui Economic Opportunity.
Let's talk about the ferry because that really impacted a lot of people. And here's a question. What is the status of the ferry system? The schools and sports organizations depend heavily on the ferry for transportation. Please discuss. Ms. Fernandez?
From what I understand, the ferry between Molokai and Maui received subsidies in years past from the state in order to provide low ferry rates to sports teams, to high school athletic programs, to residents who were working on Maui. And when those subsidies stopped, it, the ferry started running at a loss. And after running out of deficit for so long, it became too difficult and...
What would you like to see done about that? How important is it to you?
About having a ferry between Maui and Molokai? I think it, it really helps our, our residents. As, as a council member, we could look into helping subsidize some of the cost. I think they did it about two years ago. And, yeah.
All right. Councilwoman Crivello?
Well, at a time when he was ready to shut down a couple of years ago, our Maui County Council, with the support of the administration, appropriated some funding for the private owner to try and keep it up. But it didn't work out. And it's not working out because all schedules were changed that our high school students couldn't, or athletes, or even for the academic side, couldn't utilize the kind of schedule that was offered. Usually the games are on Thursdays, Fridays, and they commute back home. And they, they didn't provide that kind of a schedule. And the, the challenge is to be able to hike your equipment, you know, on the airlines is quite costly. And some of the smaller commuter airlines have sort of stepped up to help our high school and middle school to try and give it a discount for the freight of the equipment. But it's nine-passengers airlines, and I think we need to look at alternatives because it's a necessity for us as far as being able to travel. But if the private owner cannot manage without the subsidy, I don't see where the county should be subsidizing.
You wouldn't support that?
No, I tried to, I worked to get the funding that we did give the private owner, and it didn't take long that Molokai employees were laid off, you know? So I think it has to be, in a way, something that we'd have to look at would be collaboratively with the state, the feds, and the county. It just can't be the county alone. Because what happens is the tax base is coming from your populated area, which is Maui, and Lanai would be putting in that burden for, for our island. And I, I think our island is, has a little bit more pride than that, and we can use the subsidy like they do up in the mainland, and that's some of the things we have to look into. I've been working with the State Department of Transportation, and we are looking into different avenues as to how we can bring more funding in. That's a possibility. And it all comes down to taxpayers' money, whether it's feds, state, or the county. But I think it can be done in finding some alternative that can provide that kind of service.
Thank you. A question for Ms. Fernandez. What should be getting done on the council that isn't getting done?
I believe one of the things that the council could use is more the community's voice. And that's something that I would bring. I would bring integrity to the council by representing our community authentically. I haven't received or accepted any campaign contributions that would have influence on my, my decision-making. It would truly be a representation from the community, from our people.
All right. Councilwoman, your response?
Well, I have to comment on integrity. I walk with that halo over my head. I do believe, and I bring that to the table. And I do bring the community voice for the many years that I put out for the community. I've, actually, if you look at our island with the many hearts and hands that, that says we need to have the Kalani Anoli Hall restored, that comes from leadership and hearing the voices of the community. So, you know, you don't have to be on the council to hear that. You know, it, I feel I am a true representation of my island. I am born and raised there and have not, you know, been away from home for, for many years, and I've raised my family there. And if you, you look around, what, the Molokai Dialysis Center, I'm one of the founding members with many hands and many hearts that have come together from the community that we've, we've built that, you know? If you look at our Community Health Center, that also came from the many voices of the community. If you look at our Molokai Land Trust, often people ku'e, you know, save the environment. We went out there, many hands, many hearts, and, and we were able to get 900-something acres of perennial watershed lands up in the east side of Molokai, as well as the west side of Molokai, 1,165 acres. We're the only land trust that stresses the culture that's gotta be resurrected again, not just to, to bury it, but to bring it back to life. And so that the children are so involved in, in all of the work. So when, when I hear Ms. Fernandez say, "I want to be the voice of the community," mahalo. Because keep on following that trail that many of us have set in there. It's, it's the voice of the community, and you carry that through when you serve in the council. So what we have, you have to find little inoculators to, to be able to enhance the creativity of our community.
All right. Let me give Ms. Fernandez a chance to respond. You alluded to campaign contributions. Are you speaking of something specifically?
So the contributions that I've received?
It seemed to me you were alluding that you haven't received certain contributions that you feel would, in some way, impact representation. Are you alluding to GMO? I mean, what is, what are you alluding to?
It would include GMO, water companies. It would include GMO, water companies, and developers.
And so, let me give you a chance to respond to that. So do you feel that certain contributions, you know, are problematic? Let me understand this issue between you two. Councilwoman?
I don't follow her on that because you have fundraisers, you have people that come in and pay. She's running on a slate called, it's more like a super PAC coalition where disclosure doesn't have to happen right away. It comes after the election. For us that are just running individually, we are transparent. Our campaign laws demand that of us, and that's a requirement. So there's no hidden agenda as far as receiving any kind of contribution. As far as developers, I don't know so much of developers contributing necessarily to my campaign. I don't have any kind of contribution from any kind of GMO company or cornseed companies. So I don't quite follow as far as where that conflict is coming from. And if you can run on the minimum cost, I mean, just to have signs and banners, it's thousands of dollars.
All right. Well, before we move on to another issue?
Can I please speak on a comment that?
Go ahead.
Councilwoman spoke to about the Ohana Coalition. The Ohana Coalition and SAFE are super PACs, and it is illegal to coordinate and communicate with super PACs, as you know. The working together that some candidates who are running for the first time is no different than how the incumbents, you know, work together and collaborate, attend each other's events, and provide that emotional support. So as far as the Ohana Coalition and the SAFE mailouts and banners, you know, whatever that it is that you're speaking to, it's not something that we candidates have any control over, and we have not received any funding from those super PACs or any mainland companies, as some may believe.
All right. We'll move on to another topic unless anyone has anything else to say about this. All right. These questions actually are about development in Maui County. How do you feel about the state of development as it's happening, the pace of development currently happening?
You know, on Maui, it's not as, how can I say?
And I do have to warn you, we're in our final moments, so I'll try to get as much information as I can.
So development on Maui has sort of like slowed down. There's been commercial buildings that have been built, and there's been like the renovation, I think, or the changing out of a resort down at the McKenna side, O'Wailia side. And I feel that in future, moving forward with development, we've got to have better setbacks with the land to avoid the erosions.
But you're feeling that the rate of development as it's currently happening is...
It's kind of like at a standstill because everybody's working here on Oahu, you know, and that's where everyone's working. Lanai is also with the changes of the existing resorts there. There are a lot of employees going there.
Are busy in Maui, not so much. Ms. Fernandez, how do you feel about the rate of development happening in Maui County?
The rate of development, let's say that I support a smart growth, smart rate of development.
And as it is at now, the state is at now, is that the smart rate? Should it be less? Should it be more?
I think it's something that the community needs to come together and decide together if that's something, if the rate is something that they are happy with.
And for you, in your opinion?
For me.
Would you like to see more development or at the rate it's at?
Like I said, I support smart development. So if it's something that is well-planned, that is planned with the community, that is helping startup businesses.
Need support. We have 30 seconds. The previous candidates talked about moving some of the population growth of Oahu to neighbor islands, or one candidate did, very quickly. Is that an idea that sends a chill through your body, or do you like that idea?
I don't like that.
Okay.
No.
You do not want Oahu's population to start to...
No, thank you.
All right. Are there things you want to do if elected to stall the kind of development that Oahu has seen, or...
I think Oahu is something we don't want to mirror.
You don't want to mirror Oahu's in yourself?
We, Maui County, are a very unique county, and we, the community, wants to work hard to maintain that lifestyle.
That's right. All right. Thank you both. So much to talk about. Appreciate you both coming tonight. Mahalo to all of you for being with us tonight. Join us next week for Insights on PBS Hawaii as we continue our coverage of Election 2016 with another closely watched race for Maui County Council. The race for the up-country Maui residency seat will also tackle Honolulu City Charter Amendment 1, which would expand the Honolulu Police Commission's authority. If approved by the voters, the new law would allow the commission to suspend or dismiss the police chief at any time. The proposal also seeks to increase the commission's investigatory powers in police misconduct matters. That's on the next Insights on PBS Hawaii. Thank you for watching tonight. I'm Malia Maddock. Ahuiho.